Okay, let's go for the pledge. Congratulations to the by the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God and the principle of liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the April 15th, 2015, meeting of the Village of Rhinebeck Board of Trustees. What's that? Oh, yes. That would be the 14th. Thank you, thank you. I thought you were telling me it was 2014, I was like, wow. I really took it out. So, yes, it is the April 14th, 2015. We have a pretty full agenda tonight, so we're gonna move through it. I would like to note that part of our effort to increase cooperation and communication with the town, we have set a chair for them at our meetings, which we will continue to do, right over there. We attended their last meeting, Mr. Trustee Sauer had done that for us, so if you're wondering why there's a designated seat over there, that's what it's for. So, we will proceed with the first agenda, which is the swearing-in of our newly-elected officials. The term began first Monday of 2015 in April, which was last Monday, so we've all signed our oath of office, but we're gonna make an official here with a swearing-in, so I'll go first. In back of it or in front of it?
So, we gave you the red data front. It applies on the back.
I, in state, give name.
I, Hefrel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of village mayor.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of village mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Here's my spot. Anywhere, my take. You guys are here. I, in state, give name.
I, Howard L. Trout.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Willie. Thank you.
I, Heinz Sauer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the State.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you.
I, in state, give name.
I, Scott Kirkshank.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Yes, I think this...
Judge. I, in state, give name.
I, John Kane.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of acting village justice.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of acting village justice.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Gentlemen, ladies, thank you so much.
Thank you. So, we had an inadvertent omission from our agenda tonight, which is County Legislature Phil Tyner, so once we get the mic adjusted, the floor is yours. Thank you, Fred. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have some handouts.
I was gonna make a joke, a wrestling joke about Triple H, Heath, Howie, and Heinz, but then there's Scott and John, so like, you know, Triple H Wrestling. I don't know if anybody watches wrestling here. So, the three handouts that I'm circulating tonight are about the three letters that I got signed at last night's county legislature meeting. I was really tickled pink and overjoyed to find the three top Republicans sign out to one of those letters about the dealing with the puppy mills and trying to get an animal user registry going in New York State and in Dutchess County. And so, I was, seven Republicans and there were seven or eight Democrats and one Green, a whole bunch of us signed on to that. If you missed it, the Poughkeepsie Journal's Mary Beth Piper's been doing a lot of work on that. There's also a letter you might see there about how the current county executive used to be in the state legislature. He was an endorser of Assemblyman Kevin Cahill's legislation called the Equity and Education Act, along with former state senator Terry Gibson, former village board member, would eliminate school property taxes, fund our schools through income taxes. And then, John Bonisick, in the state legislature, has proposed a county-level voluntary opt-in. And so, Joe N. Coronado, who was a Republican last night, signed on to the letter along with a couple Democrats, Mickey Struinsky and Francine Emparo. Why do I bring that up? Because as an activist for the last 20 years, as a county legislator for the last 12 years, there really is kind of no issue that's bigger than taxes, property taxes, and school property taxes are the killer. So, what I'm asking you folks to consider, anybody in the room, is, wouldn't it be nice? I mean, I think it'd be great if we could, just like Mr. Molinaro signed on to, and Cahill and Gibson, eliminate school property taxes across the state, fund our schools through income taxes. Seems like that's pretty popular, but that's not gonna happen overnight. So, why can't we at least here in Dutchess County have a voluntary county opt-in? That would take state legislation getting passed. I'm asking you folks to consider launching a change.org petition on it, because just imagine here in Dutchess County, if all school property taxes were limited, eliminated, and we funded our public schools through income taxes, just something to think about. Another letter I circulated last night is because, and I'm glad to see that the Gentry Rouse is on the agenda for the solar microgrid idea. I know the city of Kingston has looked at that. I wanted to thank Mayor Tortorella and village board member Gary Kenton for working with me to help set up a meeting with town board member Bruce Washburn and Gentry Rouse and Randolph Horner. And Bruce Washburn says he's located 30-acre property next to the three-phase wire, so maybe, possibly, the town and the village could get together and get some village infrastructure power through that, I don't know. There apparently was no RFP done for solar at the county airport, and this is really concerning to me, and so, a number of us signed a letter I circulated last night for a formal, official, public request for proposals, not just for all the county buildings and property. If you look at 22 Market Street with the DMVs, there's a huge south-facing wall. To the credit of Republicans and Democrats here in Rhinebeck, you guys have really made a lot of solar happen. I don't know why we can't do it on county buildings. I was good to see a bunch of Republicans and Democrats last night who voted for my amendment to send a message to Washington about the DOT-11 oil bomb train, so to speak. Canada moved last April towards phasing out, and they're still going strong, unfortunately, in this country. We did pass a resolution last night, all of us, about asking the DEC to look at what would happen if there was a problem with crude oil transport by train. And if you look at the official website for the county legislature, I asked that it be changed back to the way it was a few years ago, and it is, where now you can just Google Dutchess County Legislature, and up in the middle of the webpage pops the agenda. Something is sort of raised a little bit of ruckus about, they listened to me, and you can actually see right on the main webpage also, a resolution that we all voted for last night about the Common Core Parental Refusal Act. Last year, there were 60,000 students across the state that refused to participate, and it's a big issue that seems like right and left are meeting on. Check out aqny.org. The only other thing is Domestic Abuse Response Team for about a decade. I've been pushing to expand this beyond just city or town of Poughkeepsie or Beacon. In January, decision was made to expand the Domestic Abuse Response Team, Dutchess County District Attorney's Office, to Hyde Park. That's awesome, but the information that I got from the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office proves to me that domestic violence is a serious issue all over Dutchess County, including right in Rhinebeck. And if you don't know about it, the Domestic Abuse Response Team, DART, is an amazing program where they really target households that have had domestic violence issues, and they really monitor them, and they see, you know, check up on them, and they work with the nonprofit in Poughkeepsie known as Family Services. So, for 10 years, I've been pushing to expand this countywide. Right now, there's only four municipalities out of 22 that have DART, and I'm hoping that they didn't allow me to put that on the agenda for this month. I'm hoping they'll allow that on the agenda for next month. That's about it. We're having our Earth Day Rally next Wednesday in Poughkeepsie, trying to ban toxic toys the same way that Albany County voted to do in December, and so, the Earth Day Rally's gonna be next Wednesday, the 22nd of April, 4:30, in front of the county office building, 22 Market Street, Poughkeepsie. I'm at 876-2488, 464-2245. You guys did not have to change the agenda to allow me to speak first so I could run to the Town and Board Meeting, but you changed the agenda, and I really appreciate it, and I should've said, again, congratulations to all of you, so I have to run to Clinton now. Thank you.
Thanks, Joel. So, next here on the agenda is a brief update on Asher Dam. We had some good news last week. Our appeal was approved by FEMA, so the funding will be released. Currently, it'll be released at the original number from back at the time of Hurricane Irene, which is in the neighborhood of 150,000, which is certainly good news. We ended up spending, all told, about 192, so they have provisionally approved an adjustment to the scope of work, so we're filing an amendment through the State Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Services for the full amount, so we're working on that right now, and they're actually... Did they schedule a visit with you today, Pat?
Excuse me?
For the closeout, for FEMA, for Asher Dam?
Yes.
Okay. When is it?
I don't know.
Okay. So, we scheduled a visit, they're gonna come... So, they're gonna come review our paperwork. We have it all online, it should, it looks very promising that we should get a full reimbursement for that, for that project.
Very good news indeed.
Took us a little while, but I think we're moving in the right direction. In terms of personnel update, I'd just like to note that we've been, you know, working with some training here. Chrissy DeNew, our deputy clerk, she's at a finance training right yesterday, tomorrow, three days, for municipal finance. Treasurer Karen McGlocklin just came back from, tell me what it is, New York State Municipal Finance Association?
Government Finance.
Government, okay. So, and Pat is scheduled to go to Clerk's Academy?
From, yeah, Municipal Clerk's Institute.
Very good. So, we're rapidly updating our skillset here at the Village Hall. Next on the agenda there, the personnel update, we have a request from Pat Coon for a vacation buyout. Is that under tab here, Pat? Just so we have the hours. Okay, that's under tab 15. So, I'll make a motion to approve the buyout of 70 hours, which will leave 125 hours of accrual. Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
The next piece on here is another project that we've been working on for some time, which will be a new position for us. Basically, at least as long as I've been on the board, we've been talking about the need for a superintendent or supervisor of our public works, which will include street, sewer, and water departments, and we've batted around different ideas, and then a few months ago, I presented the concept of combining that with our building inspector position, and that has never been done in the county before, so it took us a couple months of negotiating and finalizing, but it's, the new position has been approved by the county now, and the title is Village Superintendent of Public Works and Code's Enforcement. Just a little bit about that, we had talked about, you know, not necessarily getting a full-time position to do that, but we thought it would be about part-time, so this will be combining the two, which will allow for, you know, roughly 20 hours of oversight for those three departments. In addition to the oversight of the department's allow for coordination between the three. You know, if the water department needs to dig a hole, hopefully, our street department can do it for them, and we can make that happen. One added benefit of doing it the way that we put it together is that this will put our, you know, our building inspector and our codes enforcement officer will be here in the village full-time, sharing the duty, so they'll be able to flex, you know, his hours as needed between the multiple roles that he will be filling. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to establish the position of Village Superintendent of Public Works and Code's Enforcement here in the village.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Following up on that, I would like to make a motion to appoint John Fenton to that position, whether it affect to start date of June 1st at his current hourly rate. Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we'll move on to the organizational phase here of our meeting, which is a big, long list, which there was some... Pat, was this distributed or just... What's that? Yeah, it's... Can I see that one? I just wanna see if it's different than the one that I have. Okay, this appears to be... This is the correct one. Do you have more copies of that?
No, those were done for Friday, so...
Okay, so, I got the final one here, and I'll just read all the items here. So, it's pretty long, so just bear with me for a moment. So, our regular monthly meeting will be the second Tuesday of the month at 7:00. The location will be here, the Village Hall at 76 East Market Street. Our official depository will be M&amp;T Bank. Our official newspapers will be the Daily Freeman and Poughkeepsie Journal. I will be the mayor. Deputy mayor will be Howard Trout. Clerk Patricia Coon. Deputy clerk Christina DeNew. Treasurer Karen McGlocklin. Our village attorney, Rich Olson, through McCabe and Mack. Our assessors are the Town of Rhinebeck assessors. I will serve as the Building Department Liaison. Our building inspector is John Fenton. Our emergency management coordinator is Henry Campbell. Our village engineer will be Crawford and Associates. Our fire department liaison is Scott Kirkshank. Our fire chief is Kevin Asher. Our historian is the Rhinebeck Historical Society. The Justice Court Liaison will be me. The elected justice is William Sanchez. The acting justice is John Kane. The court clerk is Patricia Jackalone. The panda board liaison is Gary Kenton. The panda board community member will be Judy Merritt. The, I will be the Parks and Recreation Committee Liaison. Our Parks and Recreation Committee Chair is Gabrielle Marsigliano. The Planning Board Liaison is Scott Kirkshank. The Planning Board Chair is David Miller. Reappointed for another five-year term to the Planning Board as a member is Tim Decker. Our planning zoning building clerk is Karen McFarland. I will be the Police Department Liaison. Our police officer in charge is Sergeant Peter Dunn. Our Police Department clerk is Danielle Rector. The registrar of vital statistics is the Town Clerk John Gautier. The deputy registrar of vital statistics is deputy town clerk Joan Winnie. The street and parks liaison is Howard Trout. Street Department foreman is Michael Wolfe. The superintendent of Public Works and Code's Enforcement will be John Fenton. Tax collector is Patricia Coon. The assistant tax collectors are Christina DeNew and Karen McGlocklin. The Thompson Park, Thompson Mazrela Park Committee liaison will be Howard Trout. The tree committee liaison is Howard Trout. Our tree committee chair is Meg Crawford. I am the liaison to Village Hall. The wastewater department liaison is Gary Kenton. The chief wastewater plant operator is Peter Ratchen. The water department liaison is Heinz Sauer. Chief Water Plant Operator, Thomas Wallnack. I am the website liaison. The zoning board of appeals liaison is Gary Kenton. The zoning board of appeals chair is Colton Johnson, and reappointed for another five-year term as a member is also Colton Johnson. Our mileage allowance, which is established by the IRS and adjusted annually on January 1st, is currently 57 and a half cents per mile. Our authorized advanced payment of claims is reserved for public utility services and postage. So, I would like to make a motion to approve this list of our organization as submitted.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
The next item on our agenda is a public hearing, so I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing in regards to our 2015, 2016 proposed budget.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor? I'll just make a couple statements in regards to the public, and then we'll open it up to the public. Do have copies, if anyone has not had the chance, they're up there. So, just a brief overview of what we're looking at here. The bottom line is that we were able to bring a budget in under the tax cap, and our residents will receive a rebate check based on that. We were able to reduce our spending by $6,300 with a total levy increase of 1.98%, or $31,000. You may ask why, how our spending went down, but our levies still went up, and the answer to that is that we showed a decrease in our revenue, and that's basically because we adjusted the amounts to provide a more accurate projection, which was decreased by about $37,000. And this should be a one-time adjustment that shouldn't be repeated in the future. Some areas of savings, one big area was a result of the review of insurance policies that we completed in 2013 and implemented in 2014, and that delivered savings for both our workman's comp and our liability insurance for the village. In addition, we paid off a fire truck and a dump truck at the street department, so we eliminated some of our debt, and we reduced our street department staff by one full-time employee through attrition, so there were no layoffs there. Some other highlights of the proposed budget is that for the second year, we did not tap into our fund balance, so there'll be no reduction in our fund balance. We restored funding to our equipment reserve funds for fireplace and street departments. We established a contingency line of $20,000 for emergency expenses, and if we're able to avoid utilizing those funds, we will be able to build our fund balance again. We've established, just very recently, a superintendent of Public Works and Code's Enforcement with it, and still keep it under that number. We've also provided funding for employee as well as elected official training to improve our skillset and efficiency. That's something that has not been in the budget in the past, but it will allow, it's a small amount, but will allow for some of us to attend some training and deliver a better value to the residents. On the sewer and water funds, we show no increase in service rates, and we continue to provide funding for capital improvements at both the water and wastewater departments. So, that's my summary. If anyone has any comments or questions, feel free to come on up, tell us who we are, voice your questions or concerns.
Hi, thank you, Barbara Craft. Nice to see you all.
Thank you, Barbara.
I was just reading what was reported in the paper and trying to, Mr. Kimball's column for the Freeman, and trying to understand it, that the mayor's overall salary is going up to $16,000, and that's not reflected in the budget for the whole village, it's offset $8,000 of it into water and sewer, which are user fees.
That's correct.
The same with the salaries for the trustees is increasing. So, my concern is that user fees, those people who live in the town cannot vote for you, we in the village voted for you. You're also in office voting yourself an increase that was not discussed in public before the recent election. I would suggest that it's more proper in a political circle to set the new salary for the next person to take that seat, because you ran for that seat at that salary. I'm also very concerned that that increase of $8,000 for the mayor and a minor increase for the trustees, well-deserved though it may be, is hidden in the village water and the village sewer, so that I couldn't find it. I'm not the smartest, sharpest pencil in the block with cutest man, but I wanted to express those concerns and have you address them. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, for giving us the opportunity to provide a full explanation of that. Your numbers were just a bit off on the mayor's salary. It is going from 12 to 16 for a $4,000 increase. So, basically, what we have here is two separate issues. Historically, all of the administrative costs across the, at least the board members, have all come out of the general fund, yet we provide oversight and provide the administrative component to the water and sewer departments. And this is not unique just to the people that are sitting up here, it also applies to our clerk, our treasurer, and our deputy clerk, so their salaries as well are split between the three departments, and we've adjusted that, you know, on multiple occasions. So, as you know, we have a liaison for the water department, a liaison for the sewer department, and we all spend, you know, a significant amount of time providing that. So, you know, I don't think it's passing unfair cost along to those departments or those funds.
I'm well aware of the cost shifting and allocation of the clerks, that's historically been done. There's one village trustee liaison to wastewater and to the water plant. I held that position previously to the wastewater plant, I know what's involved. When I was there, it was very well organized, and Mr. Desrey did a great job. You also hired someone now to oversee that department, so in theory, by adding another layer of management, you have your chief operating officer of both plants that should require less supervision from you all. So, I just wanted to bring that point, and again, you're in office, you ran for these seats with that salary, and to increase your salary while you're sitting in office does not look good.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. Anybody on the board have any comments they'd like to make?
I just wanted to let this craft know that reason for the, it's such a new position, I don't know the title of the public.
Superintendent of Public Works and Codes Enforcement.
Right. That new position is to mainstream all the departments so they can work together easier, to have maybe if the water department needs a hold dog, call the highway department, okay? So, this guy's gonna know what's going on. Hopefully he'll save money in the long run for everybody. And this position was here many years ago in Village Reinbeck, I don't know when it was stopped, but...
Nineteen ninety-five.
Nineteen ninety-five, okay.
It was traced back, it was stopped because it cost the village seventy-five thousand dollars in buyout to get rid of them.
Well, we're not planning on doing that again.
So, it was a position that was fraught with problems, and it was abolished in nineteen ninety-five, if you've done the history, so...
Let me just remind you, this is a different board too. It's nearly twenty years later, thirty years.
Right. But it's still a small village, and it still is a small community, and our water, our water, street, and wastewater, the pipes have not, to my knowledge, they didn't have a problem when I was active on the board and communicating their needs, they worked very well together. Maybe there have been problems in the past few years that I don't know about, so I appreciate you listening. I hope you consider those points.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Discussion. All's in favor? Aye. Anybody have any comments now that the public hearing's closed, any more comments on the budget? Adjustments?
I don't know what you're saying.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion to accept the proposed budget as submitted.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
So, we don't have the next one? He's not here yet, right?
Just want to thank our treasurer. I was brand new when we did the budget, so I was completely clueless, but the numbers were so much better and clearer this year, so just want to say thanks.
Nice job. Thank you very much for your help.
Are we ready?
Yes, we'll go on to the department reports, starting with our treasurer.
And my attorney wanted to thank you, this was my first budget for the village, and I thought that you did a great job in doing your homework and looking at the trends for the revenues and evaluating the expenses, so I too, thank you. The treasurer's report is for the period ending March thirty-first. The general fund and tax account ended the month with three hundred and forty-eight thousand one oh three sixty. The water fund ended the month with five hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine eighty seventy-four, and the sewer fund ended the month with seven hundred and seventeen thousand six, two sixty-four nineteen. The vouchers to be approved this evening also include the utility bills that were prepaid, and those in the general fund amount to eighty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars and four cents. In the water fund, forty-nine thousand two hundred and forty dollars and twenty cents. In the sewer fund, sixty-one thousand one hundred and two dollars and forty-four cents. Regarding the chips, we received our chips reimbursement funding in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand three hundred and five dollars. The budget and year end, the fiscal year ends May thirty-first, and I will be working with department heads to get all invoices prior to May thirty-first in, processed, and paid by the June meeting, so that we can close the year and file our annual report in a timely manner. So, the liaisons, I ask you if you can just go back to your departments and then just have them, you know, after May thirty-first, make sure I get all their bills from May, so we can pay them. That's it.
Karen, I may have asked you before, but the capital and equipment reserves of five hundred and twenty thousand or so, that includes all three departments, right?
That includes, correct.
Water, sewer, and?
And water, sewer, general, and parking.
Parking, okay.
And then I believe the police and fire have a portion of that as well. I can break that down for you in the next meeting, if you want that in the report as well.
I have a question on the chips. You said a hundred and twenty-one thousand something. Is that the total amount we have in it as of this date now, because the state just announced...
The new, no, that's just the amount that we've been reimbursed for this past year.
Okay.
And I believe that we have about fifty-four thousand carryovered, and I think that our, I'm not sure what our new amount is, but I can get those figures for you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks Karen. Are we gonna talk just about vehicles? Or do you want us to just go through our piece, and then if we have any questions, you want to just state that part?
I'll just say, but did you want to just, I have the amount for the police, did you want the amount?
I have that. We have, I think we have three items ready to go there, so we'll just, you may have the details, just to make sure we get it all right.
You want to do them now?
Yeah, I'll start with the police vehicle, we had been waiting for some time to, they're closing out the 2015, so we're waiting for a 2016 availability, so now we have the final real quote for the replacement for the Durango, which will be a 2016 police utility, police interceptor, all-wheel drive. So, I will make the motion to approve the purchase of this proposed vehicle at thirty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars, with financing to be determined as a...
Yes, I will work with the local finance law, and I will be consulting with Rich on the probable period of usefulness for that.
Second.
Discussion, I guess I can start the discussion. There was a question in terms of how long we are, you know, legally allowed to push up the financing for the, you know, expected lifespan of the vehicle, and even though our police cars are on an eight-year replacement schedule, the controller's office may have a different definition.
It's five years under the law of finance law.
Okay, so, that's the piece where we need to finalize, but we can, I mean authorize the purchase and then...
Okay, and I'll get figures based on that five-year timeframe.
Any other discussion on that? Oh, so, one thing to note is that once the finances is set, what we're looking at is the first payment would hit, not in the fifteen, sixteen budget, but in the following year. It will not affect the current budget. Bruce, we saved you a seat.
Why?
Welcome. We even got a microphone.
Why did you feel at home?
So, all's in favor?
Aye.
Gary, do you want to go next?
Yep. The wastewater department has been working to get a replacement pickup truck, and I want to make a motion to approve the purchase of a vehicle. We went through the state bid process, so the funds will come out of our capital expenditures account. The total amount after the concession we get by going through the state bid process is twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars thirty-eight cents.
Second. Discussion. All's in favor? Scott?
You want to go as part of, okay? Yeah, doing the vehicle.
Do the vehicle thing? As you probably know, over the past couple of years, the fire department has been in pursuit of a utility vehicle to pull a trailer that contains our ATV, and for the, last year, there was some monies left in budget. Unfortunately, that got spent on fifty-nine fourteen, which needed a major repair last year, so it didn't leave quite enough to buy a utility truck. Well, during this year's discussions, it was determined that it really is a secondary vehicle, and maybe we didn't necessarily need to have a brand-new fifty-thousand-dollar utility vehicle. So, we started tossing around different ideas, and maybe the possibility of buying a used vehicle. Well, after that discussion, they started to look around, and they found a utility vehicle that would suit the needs of the department to haul this trailer. Currently, it's being pulled by private vehicles whenever there's a need. So, there's a little bit of risk insurance-wise of using a personal vehicle to tow the department's ATV. So, they've identified a vehicle, it's in upstate New York, it's for fourteen thousand dollars, fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. They think that they can negotiate a little bit of a better deal. On paper, it appears to be the vehicle that they want, although no one has seen it in person, so we're gonna take a ride, a three-hour ride to go see it. Another bit of this information that you should know is that there's a seventy-five hundred dollars in reserve, in a reserve account, that came from a donation from a local property owner who had some kitchen equipment that had donated it, and we got the proceeds from that. So, I'm seeking this board's approval to use some of the, we do have some leftover monies from the budget of this year, to join that with the donation to fund the purchase of this truck.
Second.
I can make a motion.
I'm sorry, but it wasn't...
He's probably with a motion. I make a motion to approve the purchase pending satisfactory inspection of the Reinbeck Fire Department personnel to be designated by Chief Asher and approved by me.
Second.
Second. Discussion. So, between the donation and the leftovers from previous sale, you're all?
I'm whole. And it's currently listed as fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. We're pretty certain that we can get it for twelve thousand five hundred. And this truck is gonna have other uses, I just wanted to point that out, that it's not just a tow. The... It has a utility body on it with a hundred gallon propane, polyethylene tank, and it has a Honda pump with it as well. So, itself can fight fires, and it also pulls the trailer to haul the ATV.
All's in favor?
Aye.
So, we're moving on to the water department. I don't know, Heinz, if you've met Mr. Cole, I don't know if you want to start with that, or you want to...
I just want to have, it's just a brief comment.
Sure.
Number one here.
Yes.
The request to wait for water tap requirement, I really think it doesn't need a board approval, it needs the approval and the recommendation of the wastewater...
It's actually gonna come from the board.
And we can prove it, depending on what we recommend, so we don't have a recommendation.
The superintendent's gotta have, I guess, through the board, far enough.
So, we want to look at it briefly, and we do have president both ways, where we have approved water lines to inject to a building in the back of another building, and also in some cases, we have asked for a second line to be put in, so we want to just look at it.
Gotta have a view by the water department. And then approval by the board?
Yes.
Okay. So, we'll table it until Tom has made a recommendation. Yep, okay.
The second item is a, we had a service line failure, which happened to be quite a big failure. We probably lost a few million gallons of water. It happened in the Hamlet of Reinbeck, close to a storm drain, where the water, the storm drain never noticed it until the account owner informed us that there was water pressure. After looking at it and seeing what was, where the problem was, it turned out to be in a service line, which in this case is a long service line. It's made out of two parts, one of them was recently, recently, like ten, fifteen years ago, replaced by a copper line, which went to the edge of the property of Mr. Cole, and but the remaining service line from there to the cooperation stop of the village's line was not replaced, and that is the part that blew out, and it was quite a significant blowout, caused most likely by corrosion, and as I said, we lost huge amounts of water there for a long time, apparently what was going on, I don't know when you first noticed a drop of your water pressure, but it must have slowly gotten worse, it hasn't gone bad.
Yeah, we came home.
Yeah, we were fine the day before, and we called the next morning, because the water was pumping.
Well, anyway, it looked like it was thinned out, and I have pictures of it, I have even had the part here, so we asked the owner of the line to fix it, and I think he fixed it, and so here we are.
Okay. Yeah, come on. I have some handouts for you, the board numbers, so we can get a visualization.
So, the, Heinz is correct, on Wednesday, April 1st, we had a, we didn't have any water pressure at our house, so we called the village to find out if they were doing some work, and unfortunately, we were told, no. Couple of gentlemen from the water department came out, I think it was Anthony and Bryant, very helpful, went down to the storm drain, did a test, I guess that because there was chlorine in the water, they knew that it was not just, you know, storm drain water, but something from a line. The following day, Jeff Decker came out to the property, repaired whatever leak there was with the line. Our water service has been fine since. Just so, so Heinz is also correct, that my parents previously owned this property, and they replaced the service line from our house up to the point of the street. The piece that we're talking about here that was replaced by Jeff Decker, this is the Reinbeck's train station, drive-in, is across that, and I received a letter saying that I had to connect all the way up to Hutton Street. So, we're talking about, you know, the service line from my house to the corner is off my property already, but at least it's not in the road. We're talking about, I guess, two hundred feet within the road. So, I received a letter, which is the second page of the handout, which essentially said that despite making the repair, that I was in violation of your code, and that our water was gonna be shut off on the seventeenth. This was a surprise, to say the least, when we received this.
I'm sorry, who sent that letter to you?
I think Rich emailed it to me as a courtesy.
It hasn't been fully, as I said, we already discussed the issue.
That letter wasn't really read, perhaps.
I'm sorry.
That letter was just a communication between me and the attorney.
And I sent a courtesy copy on to Justin, and we've had many discussions since then, as far as any violation of the code. You know, you're not being ordered to replace the pipe now, but we're putting you on notice of the fact that that pipe is probably gonna break.
I understand, and I don't take this letter as the official village position, it's been made clear to me since then, because I've received a subsequent letter today, but I think it's important for the board to know how they're communicating with members of the public, and, you know, I was given an estimate that it was... And, you know, I was given an estimate that it was $2,000 to fix a five-foot piece of pipe, not knowing how this all calculates. Did some quick math, and, you know, 200 feet of pipe, if it was the same cost per foot, would be $80,000. So I would imagine that that would be a tough pill to swallow for anybody who gets this letter and is told that their water is going to be shut off in a short period of time.
Excuse me, Justin, but you said that you got a second letter?
I did.
Who did you get that from?
Again, I shared the letter that you and I were discussing with Justin as a courtesy, which essentially states that, you know, you're not having any water shut off.
Right.
However, in the future, if the pipe breaks, it's the village's position, and the service line is the property owner's responsibility. And upon repair, it would have to be shut off.
Right.
Goes again.
So I guess, my wife is here. She was very upset, obviously, getting this letter. She's pregnant. We have three children. You can imagine, even not having water for one day in a house with three young children gets to be quite a difficult situation. So after this letter, I started doing some research. I spoke with Rich, and I'm in the process of selling my house. I have an attorney representing me in the sale. Obviously, our contract of sale makes representations with regards to no violations of the town or the village code, and also the ability to supply municipal water to our purchaser. So this letter, even though not official, would have created problems with my transaction, which is why I started doing this, you know, literally for the past week. You know, I don't know what my legal bill's going to be, but I'm sure that it's in the hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars, because I needed to find out what was really going on and how this was going to be resolved. The second page, or the third page, rather, of your handout is a copy of the village code as it relates to service lines. I highlighted in red the various sections that say responsibilities of the property owner. I'm not disputing that if this is a service line, that it's my responsibility, but I believe I complied with the code by making the repair. So I think that that... The letter that I received initially was an error and has since been revised, and I appreciate that having been done, because nowhere in your code does it require a property owner to replace a line. It requires them to repair a line, and I think that we're...
Then we've covered that conclusion?
Right, so we're in agreement with that.
So Justin, just so you know where we're coming from, this is actually the failure of your pipes here? Quite significant?
Right, now I see.
Okay, and these are like razor sharp here, so this is not just something that happened just like that? Must have happened for a long time. Must have been for a long time.
I can... I'll say under oath that our water was fine, David Moore.
Right.
I've got four witnesses who will verify that. I don't know how this...
All I'm trying to say here is that five-foot section that was replaced is probably not ... This is probably not a heck of a lot different than what we took out here, or the rest of that line, is that...
That may or may not be true. I mean, I don't know what the rest of the line looks like, and I don't think you can say with any certainty what the rest of the line looks like either. It's speculation for either of us to make a conclusion one way or the other. The next page of the item again is... This is the most recent letter I've received, which essentially no longer says that I'm in violation of the code. Also doesn't say that my water is going to be shut off, and I appreciate both of those points. What is of concern to me is the following, which is, why am I receiving a letter in the first place if I complied with the code by making the repair? And why is there language in this letter to the effect that's, you know, I highlighted some of the language that is problematic? The first sentence that's highlighted, you know, says that we lost millions of gallons of water. I don't know how you're coming to that conclusion. I don't know how the village tracks the amount of water that's going through one line or the other, but I Googled what a million gallons of water actually looks like, and it's essentially 10 feet the size of a football field. So that's an awful lot of water to lose in one day. So may...
Oh, it's a sudden one day. You lose, from what I can tell, you lose about 200, 100 to 200 gallons a minute, okay? Run over a number of days or weeks.
I don't understand how you're coming to a conclusion that...
You can figure that out by the size of your holes.
No one is asking you to fix the water.
I understand, okay.
Yeah, by the size of the holes and the pressure behind it.
I understand. So the next section of this letter that I highlighted that I find problematic still, and I would, by request, be removed. I understand that that request isn't being granted at this time, is, you know, given the age of this pipe and the condition of the section removed, it is evident that there will be additional breaks in the near future. I don't know how somebody can say that it's evident that there's going to be a break in the near future when a repair was just done and my water's working fine. So...
Based that you fixed five feet of it and there's 200.
I understand, but we don't know what the other 195 feet look like. Some of this language is just redundant. You know, the village code says what the village code says. It says, you know, we have to... You know, it requires tech tape, copper wire, but... I've, you know, done some research, I know Rich has done some research and spoken with the New York Council, Mayor's General Counsel's office. I don't know that we agree on a certain point. I think we're all in agreement now that I'm in compliance with the code, and that's very good. I think there is a open question as to whether or not... I think there's a reason why my parents replaced the line 10 years ago to the point that they did, which is they felt that that was their legal responsibility, and once you start hitting the road, that's municipal infrastructure, and they're not their responsibility. This part of the New York village law I highlighted in red, you've seen this, says that the water commission may lay additional pipes to the purpose of distributing water from mains, right? So we're talking about water mains, that's what's in Hutton Street, and then this section seems to indicate there's something else, a distribution line, that can bring water from a main to a property. I'm of the position that you have a water main on Hutton Street, that the piece of line from Hutton Street to the corner of my property is a distribution line that was put in place whenever it was put in to provide water to a paying customer, which whoever's lived at my property has been for several years. And I assume that part of what I pay in water isn't just for the water that's being delivered, but also to maintain your infrastructure. There... I came to the water department to see if there's any records as far as when this line was put in. Nobody has any records. Obviously, it was done a very long time ago. I can tell you that my title, which when they do title search goes back a very long time, has no record of me as a private citizen having an easement over a town road or a village road for water service. So that is a, I guess, a factual question that we don't know the answer to, is who actually put this in whenever it was put in? And I think that that bears, you know, some light on who would be responsible for replacing it should it break in the future. The next section of the village code that I've included, again, Rich has seen all this, talks about the village's authority to require property owners to repair such connection pipes tuned from water mains, again, water main being in Hutton Street, or distributing pipes in said street or any portion thereof in front of, key word there, or upon each separate piece of property. If you look at this statute, it seems pretty clear to me that there is the idea of water mains, distributed distribution pipes, and requiring property owners to repair service lines up to the point in front of their property, which was done when my parents replaced this pipe several years ago. The village law, unfortunately, seems to be somewhat ambiguous on this, so I charged my counsel to say, okay, I want you to go out there and find out anything that you can that's more on point on this, because I looked at all the cases, I couldn't find anything exactly on point. I don't know whether your counsel did or not. What my attorney found, and this is the next page, and I'm going to admit that this isn't directly on point, this relates to public service corporation law, which would deal with if there was a waterworks company supplying this water as opposed to municipality. In that situation, it's clearly defined that the entity supplying the water is responsible for the portion of the line between the main and the customer's property line, and that the customer is responsible from that point to their house. So outside of the village law, if this were, you know, a watersworks corporation, I don't think there would be any doubt whose responsibility this line would be. Another section of that law makes it clear whose responsibility it is to replace or repair if there's a leak or a break in line, and again, it would be on the water provider. I'm responsible from my house to the road. If this weren't a municipality, it would be clear that the responsibility would lie with the party who's supplying the water. This last piece is just, you know, the initial contract that I've signed with the village. I've been a paying customer for the past 10 years. My parents were paying customers for 10 years or however long, six years before that, and Roger Cole, who owned the property before me, I'm sure was paying first water long before I was ever in the town of Rhine Cliff. Even the most recent letter that was sent to me is problematic in the sense that it's speculating that I'm going to have an imminent failure, which I don't think is true. I don't have any way of proving that. I don't think you have a way of proving it on the flip side. But, you know, I guess what I'm asking the board is, you know, why am I receiving a letter at all if I've complied with the code that has this information in there? And I don't know, but do you want to get up and say something?
I just have a question really as to, you know, I clearly didn't know I owned that much pipeline. How would I know? Like, you don't have any records, so like, there could be 100 people out there in the town. Like, how many people have the same issue? And you don't know about it until something happens? It just seems so unfair to me, because I can't even go to the water department and say, okay, who put this line in? When did it go in? And they can't give me an answer, so it's just a man showing up on my property saying, oh, you have to fix 200 yards or feet of, you know, pipe, which is in a road that we have to dig up Rhine Cliff Road. And it's like, that's a lot of money to put on a resident who doesn't know that they own that. It's not fair.
The good news is that my assumption that it being a per-dollar computation was incorrect. I've been told since then by Jeff Decker that he anticipates that replacing the entire line should it break in the future would cost $10,000, which is still a lot of money.
But at least...
But at least it's not a...
But just to your point, that your line goes just to the edge of your property, almost every homeowner here who's connected to the water, their water lines, their service lines go somewhere into the street, some of them farther, some of them not so far, depending on where the water line, the main trunk line, is located.
Absolutely. And the extension that we did, or my parents did for me, goes several feet off of my property. So I'm not, you know, I'm not saying, oh, you have to bring it right up.
50 or 100 feet.
50 or 100 feet, I think it's pretty good distance.
No, no. In my case, I live in a village in a small lot. Mine goes out close to 50 feet.
Right, no, and I think that if you looked at the sketch of my drawing, and I was down there today, you know, there was a... Certainly, I'd say at a minimum, 25-foot pipe that was installed off of my property to take it down to the corner where this road is. So again...
And also, not just to be facetious about this, but when your parents replaced that line, they replaced it for a reason. They replaced it because it probably looked bad.
Well, I don't...
Didn't, you know, leaked water, didn't get water pressure and so on.
I think what actually happened was there was an instance where the water pressure in the house was stronger than what the pipes would support, and there was a flooding of the basement. And at that time, a plumber came in, put on a new pressure valve, and said, you should probably replace the service line as well. And my parents did so up to the point that they felt they were legally responsible too.
Right, and it's...
There isn't a person that I've spoken with, a layperson, who, when I tell them this situation and that I'm being asked to fix a portion of a pipe across the entrance to the Rhine Cliff train station on the other side of the street, would think, oh, well, yeah, that's your property. So...
Is there anyone else served by that distribution line?
I don't... I've been trying to find out from the water department when this...
No, there's not.
And we know that with certainty. There isn't somebody else that's shooting off.
It's just you.
Is it possible to get like a map of the village infrastructure so that we can see...
Well, these lines were laid about 100 years ago. There's no...
So how do we... I guess that...
We can find them. As a matter of fact, I'm going to...
So I'm taking it on the village's word that 100 years ago, the person who owned my property decided that they were going to go out into the road, dig, put down a pipe, yet there's no easement of record on my property that says that I have a legal right over this, and that's more like... That's a more likely scenario than a municipality who has the authority to actually dig up that road and put in infrastructure during it, when I can't prove, you know, nobody can come to me and say, you came to our... You know, a property owner came to us and made this request. So I, you know, again, I'm kind of lost a bit here to understand how we ended up being responsible for something that doesn't even come to... Doesn't even come close to our property, let's put it that way.
So where are we at now? You repaired the pipe, basically. As Justin said, we recited the law as far as the law is concerned. It's a service line. The service line is the responsibility of the property owner. The fact that it's landed in municipal right-of-way doesn't change that fact, even according to NICO council, and I basically sent Justin's arguments to NICO, and I said, what's your opinion?
Yeah, but he did what is... He repaired the pipe. This is the first time I've seen him.
At this point, he's not violating, he's repaired the pipe.
Right.
This is simply a notification that, you know, here's... It's our opinion that you've got a problem in the future. That's all it is at this point. And if it breaks again, of course, the only solution that we have is we have to terminate service until it's repaired again.
Can I ask you a question about the easement? You know, going back 100 years ago, would it have been customary for the homeowner to have an easement? I mean, this was like a dirt path 100 years ago, I mean...
I can't speak to it. I mean, I'm getting...
My house was constructed in the 1930s, so I don't think it's actually 100 years ago. I can't imagine that whoever put this line in would have done so before the 1930s, and certainly, property records and easements go back a lot longer than that. When I do title searches, I routinely see things going back, you know, to much further than that.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that there would have had to have been an easement.
We found in some areas where people just... Somebody does a favor to somebody, chose a line in.
And now that favors...
Maybe...
That potential favor is becoming my problem.
But that happens, you know, it happens.
But we don't know, right?
So how do we prevent the loss of millions of gallons again? In the case that this potentially compromised line is compromised?
Well, once again, the only thing that we have from the village's standpoint, because this is an out-of-village water service, that we're in village water service, we could, if the property owner didn't do it, we could turn it up, shut the valve off, replace it, and bill the property owner, and if they don't pay the bill, you put it on the taxes. Can't do that as an outside water user. So really, the only option that the village has if you're losing water is to shut it off until it's repaired. Then that's where you hit the barricade. That's the only option the village has at that point.
And right now, there's no... And we're talking, getting stuck on words, but there's no evident loss of water right now.
So whatever was...
Likely, maybe a better word.
There may be loss, but we haven't seen it.
Loss.
So there may be loss, but we haven't seen it.
Where there was evidence of loss, I don't know.
I walked by, after the repair was made, and I got this letter, I walked down to the storm drain. It's dry. There's no water coming down there.
I think we just need to touch on the concept of getting the letter. Probably, you know, because of relationships, you were given the courtesy of the letter. You did not receive official correspondence from the village dictating that something being done. So this is all part of a sidebar conversation about, you know, a negotiation, let's say, what the eventual outcome may be, and so... let's say, what the eventual outcome may be. And so, you know.
As I say, when I saw Trustee Sauer's original letter, I had no idea where the pipe was, what it was. All I know is it's a service line, because there's a courtesy all forward to Justin.
Rich is a friend and I...
Amazing that you pushed this forward so quickly. I can't say you were not...
I appreciate you guys getting us on the agenda tonight. So, you know, we're, we're trying to... I'm not looking to shirk my responsibility. I told Jeff Decker that I would pay the $2,000 to fix that piece of pipe, even though at the time I was kind of scratching my head. I fully intend on honoring that obligation and paying it. I guess I would like the board to reconsider some of the language that is in this most recent letter, given the fact, or whether there's the need even to send a letter at all, given the fact that I've complied with the E-code. And if, we can probably leave the determination to whose, whether this is a distribution line or a service line, to another day if there's another problem.
I'll speak with Trustee. I'm looking simply at, if there's any sort of notification, the fact that the village... It's our opinion it's a service line. It has been repaired. There's no question about that at this point.
So what is it that you want?
I guess, you know, is it standard practice when somebody's complied with the code to send them a notice like this? Is this something, you know, if, if any, when anybody else is, you know, has a problem in the village and they immediately repair it, do they get a notification from the village that outlines all this information?
Well, I think...
I think these are unique circumstances, this line. On a shorter line, obviously, you would have simply replaced it with a proper...
Are we really the only person who has had this problem?
That length of pipe is...
Okay, and now, are there other people out there who we could like warn? Because, I mean, I have told every person about this because this is like, you know, upsetting to me. But also, I'm like, this could happen to you if it happened to me. Do you know what I mean? Like, I just am concerned for those people as well. Like, I think you should start sending out...
If this, if this is truly a unique situation, which it sounds like it is, maybe the board could work with us to come up with a unique solution. I know that Council has made an offer to Rich. I would be more than happy, and I think this is an equitable outcome, to split the cost. If you guys want to upgrade the line, do it now. I'll go down the middle with you. I have no problem doing that. And I don't think that we need to have this...
Let's, let's Council discuss that.
Fine.
And try to... Bring it up all over the world here.
Okay.
It was originally intention to, you know, talking to Rich. And now it ends up in a, in a public forum. And that, I think, bothers me a little bit. Because the letters that I sent to Rich, and it was for review and asking, you know, which best way is to deal with this. And then it ends up here making public statements about what my communication with our council was. And I think that is, to me, is a, is a problem, but we can fix that.
I'm, I'm happy to take the position that I haven't received any notification at this point from the village. So, any communication that I've received from Rich was friendly emails back and forth between the two of us. And I will wait for whatever the official village position is, if there is one, and you feel the need to send me a letter. And we can, if we want to speak about this some more. Again, I'm, I'm not looking for any favors. I'm just looking for a reasonable solution.
Okay, great. Thank you, Justin.
And I just feel like saying, the overall context beyond your particular situation, which I understand how you feel about it, is that we are trying, Trustee Sauer leading the charge, to get a handle on this aging infrastructure. And what guides us is our fear for the aging infrastructure. And we're working very hard to try to repair and build before disaster strikes. So I'm just saying, that's the bigger context. And when we see something like this, I think that's the concern, is that we want to fix it now. So that's, I'm on board. I can tell, I can tell.
Why don't we, why don't we say that now?
Well, I don't know exactly where the situation is, but we seem to have a...
No, no, no. The report's coming in. We have a water main break right under the traffic light.
As you were speaking.
What's happening here right now. You know anything about that, Bean?
No, I don't. The owner should maybe add it.
Okay.
You want to get a... Yeah, most... Trying to get a hold of you guys.
Yeah, go ahead and finish up the water department.
We had net treated water in March, over March of the 12 million, 455,000 gallons. In the water plant, we installed a streaming current detector to automatically disperse and monitor to coagulate. That should save us money in terms of chemicals. To try and fill the bed that some of you have seen, or that we had to dig out, we replaced all the holding brackets. And we're waiting for the, one of the parts to be shipped and to get this filter unit back to operation. As far as the distribution system is concerned, we got a preliminary draft from StanTech. They essentially concurred with what we had thought was a problem on Route 9. They think we should put at least, at a minimum, a 10-inch new water main line in there between, somewhere between South Street and Spring Brook, where there's a 12-inch line. That will get us more reliability and flow, fire flow. And also gives us some redundancy in case we're going to have a water main break somewhere on the eastern part of the village, mainly on Mulberry, somewhere between Mulberry Street and the reservoir up on Hilly Road. So I'm going to meet with them by sometime in the middle of next week to get a complete rundown of what they found in terms of hydraulic model that they did for the whole village and also to get some preliminary or very preliminary cost projection of what we're talking about here. At this point, I'd like to request approval of $1,000 to get the SEGA process started. That was on our list of 13. It was number five. I will come back, so I will make a motion to approve the expenditure of $1,000 for SEGA process. SEGA means state environmental regulatory review. And it's actually kind of a low price, but anyway, that's all I want to go with. So, I might get a second on that?
Second.
Oh, is it favored?
Aye. I will come back after I reviewed with StanTech the detail of their proposal to ask for Task 7, which is to get a topographic boundary survey done on where we want to put this, this new line and how we want to do it. That will be for $10,500, but I will wait with that for another two weeks. Then we'll come back for our, I guess we have a meeting on, in the end of April for the budget? Or are we open to that now?
No, we just passed it.
So we'll, so we have to call a special meeting for that. One of the things that I, is just, just to the point here too, what we just talked about here in terms of leaks. I interviewed a person that sells WaterPoint leak detection devices. And I got the lead from people in Rettok. And the water department and I looked at this thing, observed it, tested it, and would like to buy it. It's essentially an electronic device, battery-powered, that uses a fitter electric crystal to detect waves in the ground and look into distinguish between large and small breaks. And each one of the breaks having a separate signature, so to speak. And that unit is $3,064. And it comes with an iPad, iPod. When you read the information, it comes from the crystal. Together is also, that's what's called the WaterPoint Network application, which is a GIS managed system to locate all our assets. By that I mean the valves, the hydrants, even the shadow valves to the house, the boxes, the shadow boxes. And we can actually put the meters in there, in that same, all in that same software. And it's all, you know, X, Y, Z coordinate based. You go someplace, you click on the button, and tell what is in there. And you get, you get a location fixed on a map. And this would have been a lot easier if we're dealing with StanTech, for instance. I'm doing, I had to transmit my drawings, so I did my hand. And, you know, to do that, they had to go out and get a map from the county to do that. And now we can actually do inventory here and have everybody to look at an inventory system and a location where all our inventory is. That item is $4,000. And then we have to buy one or two iPads that go along with it. So the operators would go around the street, you know, click on it wherever they find a problem and so on. You can also then remember where you had your latest flush. And you can do all kinds of things with that. So, total, we talked about $8,000, which is in the budget to do. So I'd like to get approval from the board to go out and buy both a leak detector and a WaterPoint network application.
Is it a sole source? I mean, is that something?
It is a company that we know, that we heard of, that it's a source, yeah.
And if they have a sole source on it, then you just have to comply with the procurement policy?
Well, I just want to get people to know what they want to be doing here, okay?
But there are no other leak detection...
I have not seen it, no. See, what we have used in the past, and this is really, I can tell, essentially, it's like a stethoscope with two cans, you know? And we put the cans on the ground, and then listen to the stethoscope.
The dove?
Well, no, no, but it's, it's, you know, the same, same, same research technology. I talked to our engineer about this, by the way, and he thought it was okay. Lastly, we installed 19 Neptun E-codes. We totaled over 914 so far. Still got...
Correct, thank you. Add a patrol down there, or stop into the excavators?
What about, I'm trying to get some cars moved right now for the water main break. It's right down here at the traffic light. So there's a lot of cars from the taste of Rhinebeck tonight.
Is it, is it, on what corner is it?
It's right down here by the smoke shop.
Southeast, west?
They just, they just, right by the southeast of the smoke shop. Southeast of the smoke shop, okay.
Smoke shop, so there's our six-inch water line. That's the one we want to replace.
Okay. So I'm just going to go down and get the other officer a hand, so I got to take off.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Energy, we participated in an energy reduction event, ECS. Someone had already asked me what it is. But essentially, we pledged our generator in the water plant to provide power for ourselves in case of a grid, a national grid problem. So we were called for one hour, so we should get a check for that at some point. Every three months, you had asked me to give you an update on our solar energy production. So from January 1st to March 31st, we consumed 14,000 kilowatt, 14,500 kilowatt hours, and we generated 3,114 kilowatt hours, saved about $498 on that. I also want to give you just a brief update. I had signed up for a fixed price with Viridian some time ago. And I've been monitoring the cost versus what Central Hudson would charge us. We have every month been significantly below what Central Hudson's supply charges.
And I just wanted to note, the solar production probably is the lowest point of the year for producers.
Also, I think, one, one, I know we all want to move on. I read today in Bloomberg that worldwide, these tip the, tip to scales, so to speak, tip to scales, from going from a fossil fuel-based energy production to a renewable-based energy production. Now, that doesn't mean that we do a lot of, it's just about 1% more wider now. There's more capacity being installed with renewable energy than there is capacity being installed by fossil fuels. So we're on the right track here. Thank you.
We'll talk about hydrants maybe a little bit, and then we, next, next month, we'll do a little adjustment to the speaker there, so.
I like this.
So Bruce can't hide out so much. But the latest on the hydrants, I know it came up at the March 23rd town board meeting, I understand that, you know, that at least the residents on Hilly Road were promised that theirs would not be shut off and/or kept. But I'm told most recently that payment for the hydrants may be now tied to discussion about fire district consolidation and such.
I think they're two separate things.
I agree.
I think what, I, this, we didn't have a formal discussion about this, it's just what I heard. They would like to, or Elizabeth, I believe, would like to have a, like a hydrant district, like the water district, that, that type of thing, that is separate from the fire. Because, well, you keep them separate in our books, they somehow got merged together, that kind of thing. So, so that's that. And then there was, I guess Warren has been talking to you about some issues. But I don't think the money isn't coming. I think the money's just slow getting here, is my opinion.
That's good news.
So.
For all of them, or?
Yeah, there's, there's some that they don't, there's one on Gloss Road that's on village property.
Well, yeah, I was going to talk to that, actually. You, you, you're right. We think it is either on village or on town property. So my question was, if I should ask our engineer to, to survey and find out where the hell it actually is? Because to me, it looks like it's split halfway to the middle.
So that's what, when it's been referenced, the hydrants on village property, that is the one we're talking about?
That's the one I knew of.
Oh, I thought it was disputing the ones located near the highway department or near the...
No, but remember, this is, we had, this is what I've heard. It's not a formal, we haven't had a formal discussion of that. So I'm just giving you the information that I have.
You told me there was five, and you were questioning that.
Mr. Replas, he called me about three o'clock this afternoon and said that his representation was that maybe we like to consider not paying for five hydrants and paying for balance of payments. We met last night, so who knows what happened in the meantime.
So how do we, who's...
I mean, right now, you know, my position would be to, let's settle up the bill that was approved with the passing of the town budget last fall, was proposed with our budget last spring, and then let's negotiate from here forward as opposed to going backwards for, you know, monies that are, have already been allotted and, you know, expected, you know, revenue there. You know, we're talking hundreds of dollars. You know, let's just put this little couple hundred dollars behind us and move forward if we want to talk about which hydrants in the years to come. And, you know, if, if at that time we want to talk about fire districts and water districts and such, then let's put this, this, you know, speak on a lot of this.
I think that was in your note that you sent yesterday.
Yes.
So, I think people have that. We just haven't formally done anything with it yet.
Next, Vice Lord? Oh, yes, let's have, Gentry Rouse is going to go say a short presentation on microgrid.
Yes. I, I just want to say, and Gentry will correct me if I get...
I, I just want to say, and Gentry will correct me if I get anything wrong. Gentry came to a meeting we had recently talking about the potential for solar, you know, building some more solar capacity. But he came to me sometime later and raised this, the thing about the microgrid monies available from the state to, at least in the feasibility stage. But I just want to say that Gentry works for a solar company, but he is here as a Rhinebeck resident and a volunteer. It is possible at, at some later time, he could be here as a vendor. But he's not playing that role right now, so is that?
That, that is, that's, that's the truth.
Probably move that mic up if you don't want to hurt your back. Just down to the midway. There you go.
I always wanted to do the. Help us voice that. Yeah. All right, cool. So I, I did print off, okay, so, yeah, Gary is exactly right. I mean, let me, let me give you guys, I put this summary together. I didn't know how many to print off. I just printed off the opportunity. And I've come to the conclusion, I've always kind of had this conclusion that, I'll give you mine.
Well, if you need a.
No, I got it. I can, I can speak to my. So, yes, I did attend a meeting talking about solar energy and utilizing policies in the state that allow for quote-unquote solar farms, all, all sorts of, sorts of things happening in the state. And, and one of the things that I thought was, the challenge of Rhinebeck was just the idea that you don't have much land, the village, the town has land, you have to site this. But in furtherance, I said, you know, Rhinebeck is, is in a prime position because they have a substation in town. And that substation feeds a lot of the corridor up here. I think it goes to Red Hook, I think there's one in Myland, Statsburg. And in thinking about this, I, I, I said, well, what we should be doing, or the town, is to look at a microgrid. And, and, and most importantly, because the state is offering up forty million dollars as a program to, to, for, you know, towns to bring them proposals and, and, and why they need a microgrid. And so I was like, well, Rhinebeck's the perfect, you know, site because they have a substation. And what they want is they want quote-unquote critical facilities on this microgrid. So does everybody know kind of what a microgrid is, number one?
Be good for.
So a, a microgrid is basically a electrical distribution facility that's all quote-unquote islanded. When the larger grid goes down, this little grid pops online and it produces energy to, well, they want critical facilities. So what they're saying is Northern Dutch is hot. They want, they also want collaboration between public entities and private entities. So typically, they're looking for hospitals, the town hall, the police station, the firehouse, maybe the high school, and maybe even the nursing home. And there's really no specific business model yet, really, on, on how this is gonna manifest. It's really, this is as abstract as it gets. It's like, send me ten to fifteen pages of what you guys want to do. And if we select you, then you'll get a hundred thousand dollars to study this further. And I, I said to Gary at one time, I said, this is due in a month. And so, but it's just paperwork. And so I said, well, you know, this is what I do all the time. You know, I've been successful in getting millions of dollars for towns in Connecticut, you know? And so I said, this is just a matter of, you know, doing the work and pulling the resources together, whatever. So, you know, so that's why I'm here. I'm, I'm basically telling Rhinebeck that, you know, you're in a unique position because you have a substation in town. And they're actually expanding that substation because the hospital just expanded, so they need more load. And then when the, when, when, when the fair comes in town and everybody comes up from New York City, there's strain on the system. And you probably see, I don't know, you know, you, you'd have to collaborate with a lot of different entities. So there, this is, you know, a full-on race, if you will. But I really do believe that Rhinebeck has the opportunity to, the way it's positioned, the town is positioned with the substation, it's a mile to the center of the town from the substation. You can drag another mile and you can just lay a, a microgrid. And, and, so that's basically what I'm here to, to offer the town is, or the village, I should say, is, you know, somebody's gonna get it.
How is that microgrid being fed by renewable energy only?
Well, no, they're not saying just renewables. You can do a C H P system, the problem is we don't have a pipe. You know, you can do a biomass, you can do a flow battery. You know, this is a specific, you know, you can do lithium backup, but, so I, I also looked at the town land, okay? And there's, what, a sixty-nine K V line that runs from the substation up through, near the, near the landfill. And, you know, Bruce did say, hey, we have this land over there. And I said, well, you could probably put a five to seven megawatt solar system, run the line right to the substation and, and put two to four megawatts of lithium ion. I mean, you know, whatever the technology is, I don't know. I don't know exactly which technology is, that's what the feasibility study is for. We've done, my, my, my company, my, me as a resident, I've been, this is what I do. I pay attention to all this stuff, so.
So let me just ask a question. Electricity is created by the solar system, then it's stored.
Correct.
At the microgrid.
Correct.
So it has to be stored with batteries?
Yeah, yes.
Which are very, 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 very expensive.
But the governor's given forty million dollars away.
I understand, but, no, I, I agree, I'm totally on board with your concept, but, so, maybe once a year, you might need the stored electricity?
So you can talk about the idea that it's gonna happen once a year, but this is the way it's happening. This is, in ten years, every little town in Rhinebeck is gonna have a microgrid.
But if you have renewable energy and enough, enough juice running through there, you can actually use it?
Yeah, I mean.
Cheaper, thus you don't have to have a failure.
Well, that's what's confused me, it only goes to these stored batteries? Or can, or is it being used? If, if you store the batteries to a hundred percent, then the overflow goes to the electric system?
Right, so, so that's a tariff typically. And, and this is all still new. So if that flow does go from, if the batteries get filled up, there, there's really no tariff for that, okay? So a tariff is basically the, the grid operator, Central Hudson recognizes every energy that's being accounted for on the grid. But community solar is in the P S E's hands right now. Being able to dispatch this energy from microgrids is in the P S, P S E's hands now. I mean, all of these questions that you have are questions I don't really have an answer to, but this is what this is about. This is for us, as Rhinebeck Village, to say, we have a substation. We're not overcrowded, if you will, like some other towns that there's no place to put things. You know, we're in a unique position because there's load, it gets heavier in the summer, the fair comes. And, you know, I don't even know, you know, they are looking for, this all came out of Superstorm Sandy. You know, everything went down in the cities and whatnot, and, and they said, well, you know, how do we fix this? And, and how we fix it is the future, and, and we need to incentivize this stuff. And so, you know, there's a lot of criteria that they're gonna look for. Who benefits, right? Is it just, you know, the town hall, or, you know, maybe the Astor Place? Maybe it's the nursing home? You know, maybe the, the hospital is able to island. You know, the hospital does have its own generators, there's no doubt, you know? The grid goes down, it's basically able to, I don't know, it's probably got, you know, propane, or I don't know what kind of generator's there, but.
So what do you plan to propose here?
I, I plan on proposing that Rhinebeck Village looks at this and, and says that you either want to go after it or, or not. And it would require a lot of your time and resources of just support. The village, getting the high school, getting the, the hospital, getting maybe Astor, getting, you know, all of this, these entities to sign letters that say, you know, we're on board with this. We have to get the utility to say, you know what, this, this is good because actually, you know, and they are upgrading that substation because there's, there's load issues and the hospital's expanding. And the hospital has to say, hey, we're on board with this. And all this really is, is just a submittal with the idea. And if we get, you know, if the village gets a hundred thousand dollars, they get to take it more seriously.
So you, you're writing proposals, is that what you're applying proposals? What, what is your role in all of this?
I'll pull it together. Whatever you want me to do, I will pull it together as long as Rhinebeck says, we're on board, we have to move, you know, we have to pull in the utility companies. Everybody has to do their part. I can lead it, but I don't have the, I don't want to say connections. I, I can't call up the high school and they say, well, who are you, you know, whatever. So I just have to have the village to say, over the next month, Gentry's gonna be calling a lot of people. And I need to, you know, hey, do you know so-and-so at the utility? I mean, this is really, this is what it about. You can read it, that's what they're asking for, is support, why, you know? And I don't even, you know, I don't even know why. Why, why do we need it? I don't know, is it worth every, you know, year?
So this is basically operates as a giant backup generator? We don't, it's not gonna save me money on my house on my electric bill?
No.
Or the town, or the village hall, or the town hall, or our electric bill?
Couldn't it be the beginning of the infrastructure, though, to do that? In other words, this would put us way ahead toward doing that?
Yeah, that, that's, this is all about how it's gonna look in the future. The grid is going back to a distributed architect, there's no doubt about it. This is how the grid was, was discovered in a hundred and fifty years ago. The municipality would put a smokestack, a coal plant, and they'd say, hey, Joe's shop needs energy, we'll just run a line over there. Hey, now this guy needs it and whatever, and it was localized. And the energy went, you know, in this. And then, you know, things grew and somebody said, well, I'll build you a gigawatt fifty miles away and I'll just transport it, because we can do that. And here's the other thing it does. It stops this conversation about the transmission lines. That, the transmission line is, we need energy, we need energy. Well, if you start taking some of this load off the corridor, then there's no need for a transmission line.
I guess the way I see it is, you know, I, I generate, say, five thousand kilowatts hour. I, I have solar panels, I make five thousand kilowatt more than I, than I use. So I would feed that into the grid, into that microgrid. It's the same thing with village hall here. You make at some point more than you use in the summer months and so on, which all go in there. So if you have a huge amount of these entities here, you could actually pull, pull all of this together.
And the second part of it is the community aggregation or, you know, energy aggregation. Just like Veridians come into you and saying, hey, I'll sell you energy for three years at this, they're gonna allow solar plants in and around the state. And solar companies will say, well, I'll sell you energy for the next five years for this price. And then they'll lock up more people, or residents will say, I want to own part of that. And, 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 and so I don't know exactly, I can't tell you exactly how this is gonna work. I can't tell you exactly where the electrons are gonna go, you know, the battery, blah, blah, blah. I can just tell you that there's an opportunity. And I can tell you that Rhinebeck is kind of situated in a nice little spot. It's small enough and approachable enough that you can drag a mile line without a great deal of headache. I mean, it's gonna be, you know, whatever. It's, so it's, it's up to the town, you know, the village to say, it's an opportu, I can tell you what, I know ten other municipalities going after it.
Does it give the backup capacity to individual homeowners? Or only these identified critical?
So I would propose all those, but you never know what you're gonna get. But no, there's no homes. This is not about homes yet. This is really just about, you know, this is about creating, you know, the future and the grid here and really putting that infrastructure in place as the towns grow. You know, if you put in another subdivision, you have the infrastructure where you might be able to do another solar farm out there and put the batteries. And then in ten years, you might be able to dispatch it to residents. I mean, this is, you know, this is why they're doing it. They're saying, we need to understand and get towns and municipalities to do it. But, you know, it's just an opportunity, I just thought about it. And it does serve another purpose. Because you have to bury lines, you can probably just rip up the lines that are in the air and put them underground. So it does beautify Rhinebeck or whatever.
Does it make more sense to use it, like to Heinz's point, than to store it? And then I can't remember the last time the grid went down and it was an issue. I, I think that if you get, if you get to a hundred percent capacity with the, whatever they're using to store it, then it should be going back to the village somehow.
See, when the, when the grid goes down now, I'm dead anymore, so, so I use it, okay? Because if anything gets shut down.
We don't store.
In that case here, if you have your own little microgrid that's still running and I could still use my, my electricity at home and I could even give some additional electricity to whoever is on the grid.
When did the grid go down last?
Well, I would say it goes down about once a year. It hasn't gone down, I have run my generator in the last year and a half or so.
But we're not, we're talking about, we're talking about maybe a branch across a line on Crossmore or something, not, not the grid. A storm, the grid.
No, no, I'm talking the grid.
The grid went down?
No.
The brownout?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we have, we have sections that go down, you're right.
I just, I mean, I don't know enough about it, but I just, just thinking of the investment that it would take.
There is no investment.
Well.
It's all, that's what I'm saying, I, I will, the feasibility study is gonna say, here's how much we would need, Governor Cuomo, if you give it to us. And then you basically get that money. They're gonna pick five to seven microgrids in the state. And they're gonna pour five to seven million dollars to the village to do it.
So all you're looking for is a, a go-ahead to write the ten-to-fifteen-page report requesting the hundred thousand dollars to do the study?
Sure, but with the idea that I need full support.
Right. I would even, just my limited experience doing the sidewalk grant, my guess is we'd want to draft some letters and go have meetings with the, you know, five or six entities.
Okay.
And, you know, in other words, I'd be happy to do it with Gentry's or, you know, there's a representative from the village, and we would draft the letters. That made it a lot easier with the sidewalk grant. And then, you know, they'll look at it and they'll decide whether to sign on. I think we can facilitate that process rather than just putting it to them at a meeting and sitting back. I think we can make that happen. But again, I think what Gentry's saying is that this whole thing was about resiliency after Sandy and Irene. But it doesn't, that, to me, I see a great opportunity to start building the structure of the future. That, so when, you know, we started this by talking about the potential for solar. I, I think it gets us much further down the line towards things that we do. You know, resiliency may not be an issue for us, as Scott is saying. You know, the grid is not going down, any frequency, the storms, you know, we don't know what the future holds. But we do, we benefit from, you know, being able to use state money to make this investment to, you know, to set the stage for the future. So we can generate energy, we would have, the resiliency would be built in, but that wouldn't be our main purpose for doing it necessarily.
There are companies who came, came to us who wanted to use our capacity. And they're paying us for our capacity into water and be able to, a hundred kilowatt hour, a kilowatt generator over there that can, you know, help out when the grid goes down. And so they projected that they go down, you know, once or twice a year. Not completely go down, but get to a point where it may fail. Then they, they, they call on us, you know, to, to supply power to them by shutting, well, by not using power, by shutting it down and using our own generator capacity. And then they're paying us a huge amount of money for that because if the grid goes down, it's gonna be a real big problem.
Yeah, and, and the grid, people only remember the grid going down at the moment. You know, nobody remembers the oh-eight financial crisis and, and natural gas at thirteen dollars a kilowatt hour. I'm sorry, thirteen cents a kilo, you know? Or, or I should say, you know, thirteen dollars in M M B T U. Nobody remembers because it's, it's, the pain's gone. And, and so what I'm saying is someday, you're gonna say, I get it. You know, solar and all of what I'm talking about right now, this is where cell phones were in nineteen ninety-seven, or the computer was in ninety-seven. That's where we are today. There's no doubt about it. I heard Heinz talk about the global capacity. It, it gets better and better and better every day. I see it every day, you know, there's a lot of people doing this, or I should say towns and villages. And, you know, here's what's gonna happen, is you're gonna start building out your infrastructure more and it's gonna be harder to get back to the idea, so. But it's up to you, you know, the village, I, I mean, I'd be willing to put. I'm, I mean, I'd be willing to put my time and energy into it. I, I don't have all the pieces though, you know, and I don't have all the resources. So, you know, and, and I don't even know if it'll be a success.
So you guys. You're proposing that we do it and you're volunteering to be the, the lead on this, I guess what?
I, I, I am jumping.
I think we get the idea of solar, it's just, we're hung up on this microgrid storage capacity.
And Howard, I am too. I mean, I'm, I'm literally, I try to figure this stuff out exactly how this is going to work too. And then I go, and then I go, but there's money to kind of be, be had for it. And so I just say.
It should be done, so make an inventory of all the generating capacity in, in the village and the town and so on.
Well, this is what would happen if we got the award, the hundred thousand dollars, so I would do that.
So for now, I guess what we're asking is for, and, and I would, we would develop some language that we would show to trustees before we showed it to any of, you know, the hospital and others, that, you know, if, if that language is suitable, that the trustees are saying, yes, we support this effort. We're saying, yes, move forward with it and see if we can get support, see if we can get a, you know, proposal in and then we'll see where it goes from there.
First? Gentry and Gary and I had talked at different times. The, the town would like to hear from Gentry at their next town board meeting on twenty-seventh. That was a note, right? And we thought this was an opportunity for the town and the village to work together. A lot of the, the institutions that, the critical institutions are in the village, but we're talking about the land at the landfill, possibility, there's forty something acres out there that we could commit to this kind of thing if, if it made sense. And the other thing we were looking at is the methane, you know, the backup generator kind of thing. That runs out after a while, but with our landfill, it could go for a long time.
Capping the methane?
Yeah, yeah. That technology coming along. But we thought it was a good, good thing for the town and the village to work together on. I don't care if the village is the lead, you know, it was very short runway. But, you know, this just sounds different than what I heard the other day, that long thing.
And when do you need to, when would you need to kick this off line?
I mean, I'd, I'd probably start writing it, you know, tomorrow. Yeah, May fifteen is the deadline.
May fifteen, and it's, it's just a ten to fifteen page thing. And, you know, the only thing that we're going to need is we're going to need, you know, letters from each institution or public or private that says, yeah, we're on board. We want to know what this is about.
I think Gary's volunteering to do this. Do you want to?
Make a motion?
Yes.
All right. I move that the village support the effort to put together a proposal for the New York Prize Community Grid Competition, subject to approval of the minors that will present to the vital partners.
Second? And there would be no outline of funds at, at this point?
Zero. Or, or at any point.
Well, I'll just tell you what happened with it nicer. The first time we went to get the solar panels for, on the roof up here and talent did it also. They want to, they want you to put up a percent. So we put ten percent, so we didn't get it the first time. Then we put up twenty percent, then we got it. So they do kind of hook you in maybe in the future.
You're exactly right, but.
Right now it's free.
And what you'll have though is that at least you'll, if you get a hundred thousand dollars, you'll have a study that's worth something.
Right.
You'll have a study that says, yeah, we've done that. And, you know, because you may come to a point where, and, and there is a part in there that says, you know, what's this private partnership as it relates to like other, somehow the funding aspect of it on the backend? But there's a lot of business models that are coming out of this. You know, this idea of microgrid. You know, if I put a battery system, anytime you need it or it runs, I get paid. So your grid's going to go down, but you're going to get energy anyway. It's just going to be, you know, from somebody else or whatever it is. I mean, and like I said, it's, it's really too early to tell, but I can tell you in five years, you're going to look back and go, I get it and this is what's happening.
Can we have the motion on the table to, to, to move forward? All those in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
I have one question not related to that. Are you grant writer?
No, but I've been suc-- I just, no. But I've been successful in getting grants.
Well, no.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much and I'll be talking to you tomorrow. Yeah, all right.
All right, Gary. Bring us through the way for our report here.
Okay.
We're, we're all the way up on them.
All right. For the month of March, there was three point four million gallons of wastewater treated, twenty-two thousand nine hundred gallons of sludge processed and two thousand four hundred and twenty-six pounds of sludge processed. Also, just, I just want to throw out there, I didn't, Peter mentioned to me that a number of years ago, we regularly had school tours of the wastewater plant. That seemed like a good thing. So I just want to say, you know, I guess, I don't know what, you know, I guess there'd be waiver, liability waivers, but I'm going to pursue that to talk to the high school about resuming that.
Yeah, school and Boy Scouts.
I think it'd be, be good, a good education. I'm going to pursue the idea.
Is that it?
Yep.
All right. Scott, fire? Oh, jeez.
What do you have Kevin send you the report?
No, it actually came on, you know, and.
I'm like it.
For the, for the month of March, the fire department responded to eighteen EMS calls in the town, thirty in the village, and responded to one mutual aid call. For the fire department responded to eleven fire calls in the town, two in the village and two mutual aid instances. Motor vehicle accidents, they responded to one in the town and zero in the village. And the totals for the year in the town are ninety-seven EMS calls, forty-six fire calls, fourteen motor vehicle accident calls for a total of a hundred and fifty-seven in the town. EMS in the village is a hundred and thirty-four to date. Fire calls are thirty-four, motor vehicle accidents are five, for a total of a hundred and seventy-three calls to date.
Obama?
Street?
Highway Department report. Mike reports that they have been repairing signs in the post that hold up the signs. And he's also doing sign inventory to check to see what signs he needs. They have been repairing the potholes and repairs are somewhat holding up now that the, the snow and the water runoff has slowed down. They've been trimming the tree limbs that are low in the traffic lanes and they also removed one dead tree on South Street. They repaired some frozen drains and moved some snow piles to aid the drainage. There's no more snow out there now. That's, that's a good sign right now. Mike has been looking over the roads for future repairs and that's to see where we can use our CHIPS money. The CHIPS money is, is the money we get from the state every year to, for road repair. They're doing stump grinding and they've been using the Bobcat with that. We have a stump grinding attachment for the Bobcat and it's working well. They also did some sidewalk sweeping with the, with the Bobcat.
Oh, did they do that up at the library, do you know?
I believe they were going up there, yeah.
Okay. That receives compliments on the job they did from the, from the library staff.
That's good. Brush pickup has begun. The mulch sales have also started and they have plenty of mulch at twenty dollars a yard. Just call the village office at eight seven six seven zero one five to schedule a, a mulch pickup or a mulch delivery. Mike says the entire village needs sweeping and is getting prices from the companies and lists are being made for repairs around the village on the roads. That's it from Mike. Maybe, maybe the town board members here, maybe we can work together when, collaborate with the village. We need your town sweeper. Once we get a rebuild. And you, oh, it's got to be rebuilt, okay. And, well, I think that's going to happen this year? I, I believe so. I believe they're working.
Did the state come through on Sunday night?
Yeah, the state, state came through and did Route Nine and Route three oh eight. So we'll talk about that.
Wish they would tell us when they did that because I noticed they had to go around a considerable amount of cars to do it through the village.
Right.
Because people were parked on the street. So probably half of it got swept. So a little notification.
Well, I'll tell Mike to request that for next year.
Just one thing, the, the state is contacting different highway superintendents or highway.
Foremen or?
Whatever, yeah. In, in Dutchess County, they're interviewing them to find out how they keep records, what their needs are as far as automation, that type of stuff. And Mike's name has come up. I told him how he put, the, the county list has Mike on it. So, and, and it's, it's like an hour interview. They call and they ask questions and.
So I'll let another meeting call in?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay. How did you hear about this?
Pardon me?
How did you hear about this?
I've been working with the state on it since October.
He did provide some lists for us, so I'm really asked.
Oh, yeah, I was going to say that. As I turn my page, my report here. Mike has a list of stumps that they're going to get to. He also has a list of sidewalks that need to be repaired, where the trees have caused the problem.
So we have that fifteen thousand dollar grant that we need to get the work done as soon as possible. So we should be scrubbing this list and finding the ones that are, are they up to priority and getting it done soon. Certainly fifteen thousand dollar. Okay. You're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, somebody think from planning and zoning that would like to review? No? Good? Okay. Police?
Standard business.
Okay. Standard planning and zoning business. Police, there were twenty incidents in the town for the month, eighty-two incidents in the village, twenty-eight tickets in the town, ninety-five tickets in the village, a total of eight arrests and seven accidents. That's, that's about it? Mover, you want to talk about the tree committee, tree commission?
Yes, yes, yes. Tree meeting was last Monday and some, some highlights of the tree meeting are, we're having our spring tree planting and I know you're interested in helping us out this year. It'll be April twenty-fifth, Saturday. We can meet at Flat Avenue, Mulberry Street and I'm, I'm asking volunteers out there, if you see this on TV, please come and help us, nine AM, Saturday, April twenty-fifth, at Flat and Mulberry Street where we'll meet. And we're usually finished around noon time, so it's not a day-long activity. And then we have a, two, two tree permits here that we have a request for. One of the trees at thirty-four South Street, we decided we're going to remove that tree and by the highway department, it was severely pruned. And we're going to get that done. It's a small tree and next fall, we're probably going to plant a new tree there. It's too late to plant a tree there in the spring. We, we already have our rest of trees for the spring. And the Duct Reform Church had a request to remove three trees on South Street to facilitate extensive sidewalk repair. The tree commission would like to get additional information from the applicant before making a determination. The possibility of the applicant possibly using structural soil beneath the new sidewalks. So Meg plans to contact the applicant, which is the Duct Reform Church, and discuss this project with them. So we have that on hold to remove those three trees. The trees are healthy. They, they just wanted to remove them. The, the tree roots are, are causing sidewalks to buckle in the three places that the three trees are, but the Duct Reform Church wants to replace the whole sidewalk on their own. So the idea is once, once you cut the roots for the trees, the trees are going to eventually die. So if we take the trees down now and plant new trees there in the fall, the tree commission is recommending this structural soil that we can put beneath the sidewalks, which would allow the trees to, to grow, the roots to grow easier and it won't break the sidewalk in the future.
So, so is, are they planning to South Street and Montgomery?
South Street, Montgomery Street, Duct Reform Churches.
Those are some of the rougher.
So the whole side, the whole sidewalk.
Yeah, no, I was just saying, there's some of the rougher sidewalks out there.
Because particularly on the South Street, there's a lot in the month.
Yeah.
Next to the cemetery.
Right. And also Mr. Hallenbach is fixing his sidewalk in front of his property. So I'd like to thank the Mr. Hallenbach and the Duct Reform Church for, for taking on those projects.
Is it Millen? Millen Sound?
Yes, Millen Street.
Duct Reform Church?
Yeah.
And then Mr. Hallenbach's is right there as a continuation of it.
It'd be a nice stretch.
Yeah.
Here's some markets to be right in the south.
Pretty much our whole block will be in decent shape then.
Okay, the, the tree commission's asking me to ask PAC to change the tree permit application to reflect the shared expense fifty-fifty of tree removal between the property owner and the village. Put that on the, on the application. And I'm supposed to work with the mayor, Tortorel, and our proclamation of Arbor Day. We'd like you to.
Is it April twenty-fourth?
Yeah, that's, that's Arbor Day.
That's the proclamation that we.
Yes.
Don't we do this?
Well, this is the new year.
Okay. We will, I'll make a motion to, to proclaim April twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen as Arbor Day. Get those back.
Second?
Discussion. Alls in favor?
That's it for the tree commission. Oh, wait, wait, wait. The new members, that's the most important thing.
More important than that?
We, we had two men, two gentlemen come to our meeting and they decided they want to join. So I'd like to make a motion to add Nick Monaco and Walter Connor to the tree commission, both village residents.
Okay. Second? Discussion. Alls in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Yeah, just a little update on, on Panda. There's been change there on the board and our own David Miller is now the president of the board at Panda and is moving forward with, but I think there's some positive changes that will be coming to us or I will be coming after the board issues its recommendations for things that the municipalities involved in Panda can do. Also want to mention just for the public that Panda is looking for some new board members. If you're interested, this is our public access station, Channel twenty-three, that is shared by five municipalities and they do great work. If you've never been to the studio, people should go check it out. And in addition to board members, they're also looking for volunteers. So what is the telephone number, Danielle?
Eight four five seven five seven two six three two.
All right, thank you.
All right. So I'll give a brief update on our Parks and Recreation Committee. Since our last meeting here, we've met twice. And I mentioned earlier, we have Gabriel Marsigliano is our chair. We had a site visit down at Legion Park at Crystal Lake on Sunday afternoon and that'll be the focus. We're still working out admission statements and they're going to be coming up with a number of, you know, rough plans that we may want to move forward through with kind of a two, two-phase, two-pronged approach, one being the physical layout of the park and then, you know, potentially. the physical layout of the park, and then, you know, potential, you know, uses or events or, you know, trying to encourage use of the park. So I'll let you know next time when we get more. So special requests, we have a proclamation here for Municipal Clerks Week. So Pat, I believe is a member of the, is it the worldwide, international?
International.
I have, I have page two here. So International Municipal Clerks Association?
And, and New York State as well.
What's that?
And, and New York State as well.
Yes, but this one.
This, yeah, this is international.
International. So I would like to make a motion to proclaim May third through ninth of two thousand fifteen as Municipal Clerks Week in the Village of Pride Back. Second discussion. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, by everybody. It's on my office.
We have a request from the Lions Club to hold their coin drop on the first weekend in May. Do we have second, third of May? And this would be in the standard coin drop locations. And this is one of the existing coin drops that has been in place for, for some time. So I'll make a motion to approve the request. Second discussion. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other business? Can you do that right? I have a correspondence. Okay. Oh, for the police department. Okay. Um, yeah, I guess we can back up, back up to there. The police department is looking to adopt one, two, three, four new policies, being DMV photo system, Internet security, Privacy Act, and drivers and privacy protection. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt these policies for the police department.
I think you're gonna have to do it subject to a union concurrence.
Oh, okay. He didn't, unit?
Yeah, not been able to get that yet.
Okay. So do you want to table? Do you want to do it subject?
Table it.
All right, we'll table it until the union has, because they're going under change in their unit represents, representation. So it may be, well, their union representative has fully retired. So we have a couple items of correspondence, and the one kind of relates back to the tree commission as well as the budget, is from John Wexler, basically talking about the budget as it relates to trees. And he refers back to the, to the code with lots of, lots of attachments there, reminding us of what the code reads. He had some questions about, you know, why mulch grinding was in the trees, and knew we had that same question, and we did move that up to the street department. And as before, he's voicing his frustration that we spend tree money on pruning and cutting trees as opposed to planting more. So.
We're having a hard time finding places to plant trees.
Right.
We're only going about six or seven trees.
Yeah, most of the locations have been replanted. I had a letter from Bob Ellsworth, who lives on Noel Road, with a complaint about the speed of vehicles traveling to and from the school. He also referenced a time when the village designated a bike route along Noel Road. And I believe I do recall that with a little pictures of bicycles painted on the shoulder, and hopefully we can get that grant someday to have our sidewalk there. In response to this, I have been working with Sergeant Dunn and Mike Wolfe, and by the end of next week, it should, it should be a properly marked school zone with all the signs that will make it necessary to, for the speed limit to be enforced, as well as that crosswalk will be repainted and, and signed like all the other crosswalks in the village. A third correspondence came, came be emailed from Vermont County, West Dyer, with a complaint in, in regards to the saxophone player being disruptive to their business, as well as their, you know, home life. And I know this has come up on numerous occasions in the past, and I don't know. We have no busker portion in our code, so I don't know if at some point, maybe with our code revision, we need to, is that, did that come up as?
Yeah, I don't think that would be the planning and zoning, just in general.
I keep hoping that we're gonna revise the whole code while they do the planning and zoning. But, you know, I know there's, there's other buskers as well popping up. We have a drummer.
Guitarist.
Guitarist, and then the saxophone player is a very regular presence on the corner. So, you know, maybe we should consider, you know, some type of maybe restriction on hours or, or what, so.
Frequency.
Yeah. You know, I don't know, requiring what other communities do. We've had numerous complaints.
So how do we address this? You have to research.
Okay. So Pat, you will, they sent it to you, right? Can you just respond to them that we will, we're looking into it? I believe that's it there. How about the water sewer adjustments?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the water and sewer adjustments as displayed on the page.
Second. Any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
We have some minutes here before I make the motion. Does anyone have any comments on these one, two, three cents of minutes? So I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted for March fifth, March tenth, and March eleventh of two thousand fifteen. Second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Anything else for us, Pat, that possibly we may have missed?
I had put Karen's last set of minutes on April fourteenth. No.
Are they in there, Pat?
Yeah, they're in there. Karen's.
Were changed as I asked for?
Yes. Karen's set, please.
They weren't in the.
No, they weren't in the.
Okay.
I don't know.
March nineteenth?
Yeah, I had emailed them. I think I emailed them.
Okay. Well, let's just hold off on that one. I haven't reviewed that one. I don't know about anybody else. But that one come be emailed to? No, it's separate.
I think I just put it there.
Okay, well, let's include this one for next, next one.
Is this, is this a schedule for our?
Oh, yeah, this is our.
This is a work in, work in progress.
Yep, this is our.
What, update you? What's going on?
What's that?
I'll put it in their voice folder, so.
Oh, you did?
Update on.
Okay. So we got, it looks like we have a fair number of them covered, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, we have two or three.
Couple guys aren't, I don't see any X's on a couple guys. I didn't even know this existed.
Well, I think that one of, one of the things here, if anybody can make it, we can substitute it. You know?
Yeah.
I mean, I put one in every five days without, I'm flexible.
I'm sorry, I missed yesterday's meeting. Oh, you were supposed to be there?
Oh, yeah, I just got the schedule.
So who, who put you in there? Regular scheduled one?
Twenty-seventh's the next one.
Was last night a reg- regular one, or was that?
I'm on for the twenty-seventh. I'll be there.
Oh, boy. Just since Howie and Hines are both also listed for September fourteen, I'm gonna take myself off, because I'm, I've got a whole bunch. What?
That's nice of you.
Well.
Well, we can adjust this as it, as it moves forward. Let's keep a kind of.
What's the tenth, thirteenth conflict?
We have a meeting, right?
Oh, is that on a Monday?
They moved there probably for almost a day.
Oh, yeah.
Scott, do you have a matter for executive session for this evening?
I do.
So I'll make a motion to go to executive session for personnel matters relating to an individual?
Second.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Yes, that's right, that's right, yeah. So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Second.
They need to call to executive session.
Oh, we did that in executive session. So, Anthony, you want me to do it again?
Make a motion to resume regular session, then you adjourn.
Okay. Amended motion to resume the regular session and to immediately adjourn.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.